Thank you very much. So, welcome to this meeting of definitive map and statement of public rights of way meeting. I am councillor Skinner, I am chairman. Councillor Seer is sitting comfortably beside me. And we will commence. Have we got any apologies, please?
Thank you, chairman. We have apologies from councillor Gibson and councillor Fleetwood. However, we have councillor Vernon replacing councillor Fleetwood for this meeting only.
Thank you for that. Do we have any declarations of interest? Thank you. Then we move on to the minutes of the previous meeting. Going to... I'll propose it.
I second that.
Okay. All in favour? Thank you. It's carried. So, we move on to the first substantive item on here, which is appeal against prioritization of the definitive map modification order case 430 Addlethorpe, proposed addition of public footpath between Rectory Lane and St Nicholas Church. Are you going to speak? Thank you.
Right. The application was made by Addlethorpe Parish Council in May 2021 under section 53.5 of the Wildlife and Countryside Act, and it seeks a modification order to record a public footpath between Rectory Lane and St Nicholas' Church in Addlethorpe. If I just bring up a map, and that is the route upon the screen at top. Just as a bit of background, 11 user witness testimonies have been submitted in support indicating usage over the route between 1953 and 2021. However, it should be noted that the route has changed course during this period of usage due to the construction of St Nicholas Close and 10 to 14 Rectory Lane around 2000, and the edge claimed footpath is the one that has been used following the development. Several documents were submitted in support of the application. These include extracts of minutes from several meetings of Addlethorpe Parish Prokeial Society over the period of November 83 to September 2002, correspondence and documents of 1986 relating to the sale of land owned by the Addlethorpe Prokeial Trust that is now owned by St Nicholas Close, occupied by St Nicholas Close and part of Rectory Lane, and correspondence of 2001 between Addlethorpe Prokeial Charity, Addlethorpe Parish Council and the County Council. The County Council's letter of the 23rd November 2001 suggests that efforts were made to seek the agreement of the developer of St Nicholas Close for a route across the site, but this came to no avail. As a result, Addlethorpe Parish Council were advised to apply for a modification order seeking to record the route as a public right-of-way, and they were provided with an application pack in December 2001 to facilitate this. However, 20 years passed before the application was made. The alleged footpath runs east from a point on Rectory Lane down a snicket between the properties Westview and Belmar, which are nine and 10 rectory load respectively, and then north between three and four St Nicholas Close. It then continues along St Nicholas Close before turning east to run through the grounds of and to the entrance of St Nicholas' Church. Both Rectory Lane and St Nicholas Close are adopted highways. Evidence held on the file suggests that the application was made following discovery by a parishioner that the passageway between Rectory Lane and St Nicholas Close is not recorded as a public right-of-way and to prevent its closure to the public. Following the receipt of the application, the officer opinion was that none of the exception criteria was applicable to it. So, the case is currently ranked 158 out of 458 cases in the priority schedule, with the first 20 cases currently being progressed. It should be noted that there were seven cases that have been given higher priority and are awaiting officer availability for progression. So, into the appeal. An appeal was... the appeal request for a change in priority relies on criterion one of the policy, and that's been made by Addlethorpe Parish Council, the applicant. This criterion is as follows: where there is sustained aggression, hostility and ill feeling within a community that is causing severe disruption to the life of the community and that it is processing the case early, there is a strong likelihood that this will reduce. So, Addlethorpe Parish Council provided the following documents in support of the appeal: a letter dated the 9th of November 2020 from a parishioner to the Ramblers, that's appendix D; an undated anonymous letter to Lincolnshire County Council, that's appendix E; a letter of the 19th of December 2022 from a parishioner to Addlethorpe Parish Council, appendix F; letter of the 20th of December 2022 from a parishioner to Addlethorpe Parish Council, appendix G; and handwritten documents detailing challenges made towards people using the route, that's appendix H. So, the letter of the 9th of November 2020 and the undated anonymous letter suggests that the path has been used for the last 50 to 100 years. They suggest that 15 to 20 years ago, the builders of St Nicholas Close closed the path and then subsequently agreed to reopen it on a different alignment with a width of one to one and a half metres and with a gate being provided where there is a step to mitigate a trip hazard. They suggested that the path is in regular use, but the occupants of some of the adjacent properties wished to close the route and incorporate the land over which it runs into their gardens. One of the authors suggests that the occupants of one of the properties had blocked the route, had blocked the path, and someone had torn down and removed the gate that was located on the route. The letters of the 19th of December 2022 and 20th of December 2022 do not provide evidence supporting sustained aggression, hostility or ill feeling towards anyone who sought the path. However, one of the orders suggests that they may only seek to remove any of the fences should the path be reopened and be recorded as a public right-of-way. This suggests that the route was obstructed at the time when the letter was authored. It should be noted that this is typical for modification order applications supported by user witness testimonies to be made for routes where access has been barred following long usage. Handwritten documents suggest the author was told by a resident that they were closing the route. This was followed by the gate on the path being padlocked in April 2020, but the padlock was removed two days later. The documents detail five instances of alleged abuse towards people seeking to use the path during the remainder of 2020. The appellant's email suggests that there was an alleged altercation between two parties in 2023 and that this is being investigated by the police. So, I'll just take you through just a few photographs, it'll just take a few minutes. So, I'll just move on from the plan. So, this just shows the claimed footpath in relation to the wider context of landscape. So, it's between a caravan park on the west side and Inglemills, which is pretty tourist, big caravan area to the east and the coast. So, just got an aerial photograph just showing St Nicholas' Close and the route to the church. So, I'm just bringing back up the map. This is taken from Rectory Lane, looking east along the ginnel, heading towards St Nicholas Close. So, this is between Westview and Belmar. So, this is looking from the westernmost end of St Nicholas Close. You can just about see the ginnel just behind the wire and post fence. There's a fence between the two cottages, bungalows there. It's a slightly different photograph. This time you can actually see that the end of the ginnel has actually been boarded up, and that boarding's just beyond the trailer. And this was taken in August 2022. This is just looking east along St Nicholas Close, and it's now looking east towards St Nicholas Church. So, back in June 2009, there was a gap in the hedge heading off the Close into St Nicholas Church, but then in August 2022, Google Street View records the whole church boundary being fenced. And I think that's it. I'll take you back to the...
So, there's no doubt there was a footpath there?
That's right. Certainly the aerial photographs on the screen showed that there was a route laid out.
So, we're actually looking at this appeal and moving it further up the list. Where is it currently and where does it end up?
It's currently about 158 out of 1460 applications.
And where would it end up?
We're probably looking at about 26 or 27 from the list if you were to prioritize action.
Well, I don't think... Yes, councillor Matthews?
Rather than the numbers, can we get an indication of time?
Sorry. Bearing in mind that there are hundreds of new DM Mo's coming in at the moment all the time, can we have a better idea of the timeline rather than the numbers on the list, please? So, if it goes to 21, does that mean it's six weeks or is it six years?
It really is difficult to say, to estimate how long these cases take because there are just elements that are just beyond our control. So, when we actually investigate a case, there are two determinations. We have to look at whether the case meets the evidential threshold to warrant the making of a modification order. If it doesn't, the applicant has the right to appeal that decision with the planning inspectorate. If we do make a determination or we get directed to make an order, it's then subject to public consultations, and again, people will have the right to inspect the evidence and object on that basis, and then any objections are also dealt with by the secretary of state. At the present moment in time, just looking at the planning inspectorate alone, we do have a case down there at the moment, and we're looking at about two years before submission and getting an outcome on these. In terms of our own caseload, it could take several years even if it were to be upgraded. I can't provide a definite timescale, unfortunately.
Does that answer, Col?
It does, but it just makes me think we should just get on with it and put this back where it was. This is just someone trying to steal land, isn't it?
Councillor Carrington.
Mr Pickwell, can I just unpack some of quite a complicated situation? Because we're using words here like 'appeal' in perhaps a rather counterintuitive way. So, you don't set out in the report in detail, unless I've missed it, what the original DM Mo that's being appealed against is, unless it is what is being proposed at the moment but slower. Is that in practice the case?
The application's been made, and we, as an authority, we have to determine the application on the basis of the evidence. The purpose of the meeting here is we have a large caseload of modification order applications, 460, and as it currently stands, our definitive map modification order policy, we deal with them in a date of... Date of receipt order basis unless they meet certain criteria. Now, anyone can appeal the prioritization where the standing of the case is within the priority schedule, so it's not an appeal on the making of the modification order itself. It's just an appeal where the modification order stands within our priority schedule.
Through you, chairman, thank you for that, Mr Pickwell. That is, I used to chair this subcommittee, and I thought that would be the case.
Yeah, sorry.
But it can seem a little bit arcane to people. Why are we having an appeal against what seems to be a perfectly sensible proposal? And I think going back to your original, the first map that you put up that showed the context of the case, one of the things that we've always had a concern about in this subcommittee is that we end up with a fragmented footpath network, and we do not want a fragmented footpath network. And one of the side effects of the workload which your team faces is that if cases hang around for a great deal of time, it may well be that local residents will assume that this is a piece of land that somehow belongs to them that does not have public rights of access. On the one hand, therefore, chairman, it would be unfortunate if we allowed people to jump the queue because that's not very English. But on the other hand, if there is a threat to this particular footpath, and you've given us some visual evidence of that happening, it does seem to me that perhaps we should go along with what the parish council are seeking to do, which is basically bump it up the order and try and make sure that that threat to a public footpath does not get worse. I absolutely understand the criteria which you have set up very helpfully in the report. I think the most diplomatic thing I could say, chairman, is that since I'm not personally familiar with the site and since none of us have direct involvement in the facts, I am minded to accept as being, in good faith, as being honest and true, the assertion made by the parish council. Thank you, chairman.
I take that, councillor Carrington, that you've moved it. Councillor Clark.
Thank you, chairman. Andrew, just for clarification, on the evidence, if, I know there's been an incident, but barring that, the letters, all the letters taken as evidence, so if I wanted to appeal, I could write my next door neighbour's very violent. Would that be enough, or do you need additional evidence?
We have to take the evidence just at face value of what it actually says. Okay.
Councillor Matthews.
If I'm reading the evidence correctly, it comes to a physical assault that's been reported to the police with damage to one of the... But it sounds like the disputant, i.e. the person wanting the footpath open, is the one that's been assaulted by the neighbour. Have I read that wrong?
I can't confirm that.
It's just reading...
Yeah.
I might have misread the evidence.
That might be an interpretation, but it was just, you know, it's the way it was put in the appeal that it...
Okay.
There was an altercation, so...
There's been an altercation that's been reported to the police. It's unpleasant, isn't it?
Councillor Carrington has moved that we move the item further up the list. I'm quite happy to second. Is everybody in favour? Thank you very much for that. Moving on to the next item then, Andrew. Thank you.
So, we've got 20... I think the last one that was...
Microphone, please.
Sorry, yeah. The last one that was reprioritized was Woodall Spa, and that's at 27. Did you want to move Addlethorpe to 28?
Do we think we've got enough evidence to move it to 28?
That will be the next one that will be taken up once all the other ones that have been previously prioritized.
I do think it's a matter of urgency because it's definitely a blocked-up footpath, and the fact that people are getting, let's say, ready to break the laws with each other, I think that's probably where we need to be.
Okay. So, it'll be 28.
Councillor Vernon.
Thank you, chairman. I think sort of coming into this sort of slightly separate, it's probably difficult for us on the hoof to say where an item should be reprioritized to, but I think if there's instances of threat, then I think that that should move higher up the list than other applications. I don't know what reasons other applications were moved up for previously. I'm not fully aware of the history, but my view would be that once those sort of things start occurring, that does need to become much more urgent than other matters. Thank you.
Sorry, not wishing to backtrack in my desire to move this up the list. As I said earlier, we've had a massive tranche of DM Mo's coming in, and I just wonder what will happen. How can we future-proof this position so it doesn't get trumped by others coming in above it? Will this remain the 28th one that we deal with, no matter what happens? So, just some clarity on that. I think this is really important because it's clearly been a footpath, someone's blocked it up, there's argument within the village. If you look at the line of it, it's right and proper that there be a footpath there, and I just don't want to have a death on our hands, really, but I don't also want it in future to be moved down the line by other more important, not more important ones, but with bigger claims of violence coming in from other applications. The numbers we're talking about are massive, you know, 400. I was at a parish meeting in Hutofft where the whole hall was full of very angry and agitated people, and so I just wonder about that security of getting it dealt with quickly.
I think the security of getting it dealt with is literally down to the number of officers we've got, but when we've got things like this where assaults or threat of assault, remember verbal assault is still assault, we do need to move it along. Andrew, would you like to say anything on that?
Would you want to move it up higher so it's the next one to be picked up potentially? To the 20 foot? That would put it at 21 in the list.
Councillor Vernon.
My view on that would be, and as I say, sort of, I'm not aware of the history, it's very difficult to know what's in front of it and whether any other cases have been moved up for reasons such as this, and I don't think that I can, and I sort of obviously, I don't feel that I can make a decision on whether it should be number 19 or number 23, and I wonder whether there's an element of officer discretion required there according to what's been bumped up and why previously.
Councillor Carrington. The person who moved the motion, I think councillor Vernon is spot on the money. We can't give you a number because we aren't aware of what happens above this, so there might be something else, but I think you've got the feeling of the committee that where there are levels of tension of this sort and the potential for threats or actual violence or whatever the dissent, serious dissent within the community may be, the best way to lance that boil is basically to get the job done as quickly as possible. Chairman, through you, can I just suggest there is a further issue here, and perhaps you as chairman could send a message out on all our behalf if colleagues agree, that where you have new development, either where there is an existing formal footpath on the network or where there is a desire line or whatever that has been, may not be a formal public footpath, but it's something which has been used for a long time, the local planning authority, and as you know, I speak with some skin in that game, does need to make provision when a new development is allowed for porosity for what we now would call active transport, i.e. walking or bicycling, using a footpath across the site, particularly if there has been that previous usage. It is incredibly important. Had that happened in the case of these new houses, we wouldn't be sitting here now with this problem.
Councillor Carrington, I 100% agree, and as to critique what sits where, I think we need to present a few more facts before the committee as well, and that would not be time wasted. So, you have the feeling that the committee needs moving up to a place of your discretion because, quite frankly, we don't know what sits above, and we're happy to move on to the next item. Thank you. Andrew, when you're ready.
Right, so, the next case is an application which has been made by North Kesteven District councillor Mervyn Head in August 2022, and it seeks a modification order seeking to record a public footpath between easternmost end of Public Footpath 3 and Ferry Lane in the parish of North Kye. 15 user testimonies have been submitted in support seeking, indicating usage over a period of 1981 to 2019. Just background, the easternmost end of Public Footpath 3 ends on the bank of the River Sleigh approximately 60 metres short of Ferry Lane, a publicly maintainable highway. Councillor Mervyn Head and John Bevan, the appellants in this case, suggesting in their appeals that access between the easternmost end of the public footpath and Ferry Lane is blocked by a wooden panel fencing of a height of at least six feet. Councillor Mervyn Head's appeal suggests that the application may have been made to resolve a missing link in the public rights-of-way network to enable riverside public access along the river sleet between Sleaford and the river Witham and to connect to the Water Railway, which is a sister street for walkers between Lincoln and Boston, and to complement investment being made by North Kesteven District Council in the Sleigh corridor. So, again, when the application was made, case officer opinion at the time was that it didn't meet any of the criteria to which it would, in the priority schedule. The appeal, neither of the applicants have specified the criteria of the modification order case priority policy under which they seek the appeal, the application to be given higher priority and raised in the priority schedule. Both appellants suggest that most of the cases in the priority schedule are currently in use and that all that is required is for the status to be legalized, i.e. the route to be recorded as public rights-of-way or the classifications to be changed, whereas this particular alleged footpath is impassable and it is obstructed by a six-foot-high wooden panel fencing. It is not possible to identify from the priority schedule whether the route, subject to any of the cases listed, are currently available for public use. In fact, of the 298 modification orders that have been made over the last three years seeking to record historical public rights-of-way, the majority of these aren't available on the ground because they have fallen into disuse and have been forgotten about. Also, a lot of the user-based public rights-of-way claims in the priority schedule have been made for routes where access has been barred for long usage. Councillor Mervyn Head states that North Kesteven District Council has and continues to undertake considerable investments in the Sleigh corridor, and this has included the recent completion of an £800,000 Witham Sleigh Blue Green Project. The North Kesteven District Council is investing further investment of around £50,000 awarded by the UK Shared Prosperity Fund into a boat trip along part of the River Sleigh at its Sleaford end. He also suggests that the alleged footpath, should the alleged footpath be recorded as a public right-of-way, it would provide access for more than 20,000 people per year, linking Sleaford to the villages along the route to the Water Railway which runs alongside in the vicinity of the river Witham. He contends that the current obstruction of the alleged footpath and the resulting missing link in the public rights-of-way network may impact on North Kesteven District Council's medium-to-long-term development plans for the improvement of the Sleigh corridor. Neither case seems to fall within the first seven policy criterions of the modification order case priority policy, but consideration should be given to whether they meet criterion H, where the route will significantly achieve in a countryside and rights-of-way improvement plan objective or statement of action. Following the countryside rights-of-way improvement plan objectives and statements of action may apply and should be considered. Statement of action one: identify and improve off-road routes linking communities with schools, employment centres and local services. The alleged footpath, if recorded as a public right-of-way, would result in a continuous public footpath connecting the villages of Ruskington, Annick, South Kye and Chapel Hill and the services located therein. Statement of action 39: identify areas deficient in access and where access proposals will benefit the rights-of-way network. There are several missing links in the public rights-of-way network in the area local to the alleged footpath. Should the alleged footpath be recorded as a public right-of-way, it would resolve the missing link and enhance the local public rights-of-way network. Statement of action 18: identify and develop circular and linear recreational routes to and from the countryside and tourism centres. And CT9: develop longer-distance routes and trails. Should the public foot, should the alleged footpath be recorded as a public right-of-way, it would result in a 10-mile continuum... rights-of-way, it would result in a 10-mile continuous public footpath running almost extensively exclusively along the embankment to the River Sleigh from a point on the A153 opposite Priory Road in Ruskington to the River Witham at Chapel Hill, and a public footpath that runs for further 10 miles along the embankment to the River Witham to Boston. It would also connect the Spires and Steeples Arts and Heritage Trail promoted by North Cesteven District Council to the Water Railway promoted by Sustrans. The Spires and Steeples Arts and Heritage Trail runs between Lincoln Cathedral and St Dennis Church in Sleaford, passing through several villages in North Cesteven, and the Water Railway is mainly traffic-free route for walkers and cyclists running alongside or in the vicinity of the River Witham between Lincoln and Boston. However, it should be noted that the Kirkstaid Bridge-Chapel Road-Langrick Bridge section of the Water Railway runs predominantly on public roads. Should the alleged footpath be recorded as a public rights-of-way, it would result in a continuous public footpath connecting the footpath along the embankment to the River Witham to the Spires and Steeples Arts and Heritage Trail, thus creating a continuous pedestrian route linking effectively Boston to Sleaford and Lincoln. So I'll just take you through a few slides. So I've got a close-up of the alleged footpath here that's been claimed, just to fill in the missing link. This shows the alleged footpath in the greater landscape in and around the area, so you can see the River Sleigh and how it actually fills in the missing link with the route that runs all the way up to Chapel Hill. You've got the aerial photograph, so the footpath runs along the north bank of the River Sleigh and just stops ahead at the moment, so the claim would attempt to actually complete the missing link in the network. So I'm just taking you through photographs from street view again. So this is looking north up from Ferry Lane. It seems like there's been some sort of gap made in the hedge at some point, but this was back in July 2009, and that gap is still present in August 2021. This is taken from the bridge on Ferry Lane, just looking over towards the embankment on which the alleged footpath runs. It's not apparent in there, but there currently is no fence, and that was taken in July 2009, but if I change the photo, it's probably not as apparent on the screen, but there is a fence that's been constructed across the riverbank, right down to the river's edge, and so obstructing the route. And I think the final photograph is just taken from a different angle back in 2009, and there's the close-up of the fence across the embankment. That one's taken in August 2021, yeah.
I've got it. Photographic evidence rather than any other written evidence, et cetera. We're all doing it.
We'll get the hang of this eventually. There are witness testimonies to support, in support of the application, but in terms of the prioritisation appeal that's been made because the closure of the route, lack of access along the embankment.
Councillor Carrington, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Can I begin with a declaration of interest, which I should have made perhaps at the beginning? I'm sorry? I can't hear you, Chairman, unfortunately. I've only got one working ear. Yeah, a declaration of interest. North Cesteven District Council is a party to this matter. I am a member of North Cesteven District Council, and councillor Head is a fellow member and is therefore known to me. I will take advan, I hope it's okay for me to speak on this matter, but I'll take advisement from Rachel as to whether or not I should vote. Obviously, I've got no pecuniary interest in it, but the council does have an interest. Andrew, I think when you set out the potential reasons why criterion eight might be applicable in this case, you did a better job certainly than I could do, and I completely agree with that. I think there is a potential that criterion two might come in, and that the route might be permanently lost. Actually, some of the alternatives that were looked at, which we haven't discussed this morning, actually involved the possibility of bridging, which becomes very expensive and very, very complex, when we have a lot of evidence, which I was aware of, that there was a path here, and I have seen that obstruction myself. So the photograph, certainly when I last saw it, which was probably about 18 months, two years ago, was accurate at that time. Chairman, the Sleigh as a route is immensely important, as the map that we've seen shows, this is one tiny gap, just a few yards, in a route that goes all the way from Chapel Hill right through to Sleaford. It is immensely important as a walking route. A lot of public money has been invested in improving both the route and the Sleigh, and that programme continues, and indeed there is a long-term aspiration to enable navigation all the way from the Witham right through to Sleaford, which would have further benefits, not only in terms of quality of life for our residents, but also obviously economic benefits. This is this one little tiny gap. From my visit to the site, and it's purely my personal, rather than a professional evaluation, but one made with a certain professional background, I don't think that were the footpaths to be reinstated, and I'm personally convinced of the evidence that it was there in the past, that it would have a particularly negative impact on the amenities of the occupants of the dwelling. There is various elements of hedging which we've seen, and the dwelling is set back to a degree. So purely, you know, if it were a planning application, I think we'd allow it, because we wouldn't say that there was unacceptable levels of harm to amenity. On the positive side, I do believe that there is an enormous amount of weight should be given to the criterion eight, which Andrew has outlined in more detail for us, which is the public improvement, which would result from making sure that there is a...
It's an alarm, isn't it? We ought to vacate the chamber, everybody.
No, that's not the fire alarm.
I've never heard the bomb alarm before.
I don't know whether it was a drill. Unless it, they were testing it, but I thought they tested it the first Monday of the month. At nine o'clock. The fire alarm was tested at nine. Which I've literally not heard in 17 years.
I've never heard of it, being at the council, so we'll even know where to go. I'll be following you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Would you like just to fill us in to where we were?
Yes, I think we were discussing, I think councillor Carrington was discussing the economic benefits of the scheme, the Sleaford scheme, I think, the River Sleigh scheme, and how that might actually, the case, the appeal, might meet that criterion point.
Thank you very much. So that is one of the criterias for moving up the list.
It is indeed, yeah.
Do we have any other? Thank you. Thank you.
I'm interested in the evidence. It says there are 15 user testimonies have been submitted in support to propose indicating usage over a period between 1981 and 2019. Have we got the historic evidence? So I think I read somewhere this was referenced in the 1906 Ordinance Survey, but it's shown in the earlier Ordinance Survey maps, the 25-inch to the mile that came out in the 80s, because it looks to me as though there is custom and practice about this being used for all that period, and we don't know enough because you haven't investigated, but has there been a change of ownership of that property who's just decided to shut that path and seize that garden back? But can you tell us what more evidence has been offered up, please, by councillors, Mary and others?
To date, it's just the use of evidence forms that have been submitted. It's quite possible that the showing of the route in the historical Ordinance Survey maps, it might have once been a towing route, of course.
Yeah, that's what, it looks like it should be on here.
I've got that, councillor Carrington.
It just looks like there should be oodlers of evidence to support this application in addition to eight as well, because it looks like there should be a footpath there, and there has been a footpath there, that appears to have apparently been quite recently blocked. And what I didn't understand, Andrew, and perhaps you'll go through it again, was again, that chronology, that timeline about there was a gap in the hedge, people were walking it, they walked it to 2019. When has this wooden fence been put up, please? And because that's not obstruction technically on our footpaths.
We don't know exactly when the fence was put up, but certainly, I think that's probably what actually led to the application being made back in 2022. So it looks like it was a more recent addition, and certainly the Google Street View photographs show that the fence was across the embankment in August 2021.
Thank you for that. It definitely would have been a tow path because that was built as a navigation. I'm quite familiar, even though it's not on my bit, I'm really quite familiar with the Sleigh as a navigation. So if we were to look at this appeal, what would be the net effect, again?
The net effect would be that the appeal would be moved up, so it will probably be looked at 28th within the priority schedule.
Thank you for that. Is anybody willing to move that?
Chairman, before we do, I just need advice from Rachel as to whether I'm allowed to vote or not.
Thank you.
Paul, I'll move that.
I would say yes, as it's not a personal, it's not a personal pecuniary interest.
Thank you. Can I propose we move this up the list, but can I propose at the same time that we ask for the complaint to offer more evidence?
Thank you for that. Do you have a second, then? Councillor Seer, seconds. Everybody in favour? Thank you very much. Can I leave that once again for the office to come back to where it lands, but we also need some vision on criteria, why things are where they are, whether it's age, priorities and things, so we can make more informed decisions, I think. I think that's what the general feeling of the committee is. And I think that was the last item, so I'll bring the meeting to a close. Thank you.